Welcome to Moore City Council Chambers at four twenty nine C Street. This is the special meeting for August twenty ninth. Please silence all electronic devices as a courtesy to those in attendance. Thank you. If you could please stand for the invocation by Pastor Ash and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we all bow our heads and close our eyes for a moment of reverence for the Lord. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you for another day to serve you. And Lord, tonight, Father, we have a special request, Father, a special anointing of oneness of communication, Father, and what to do with the finances that you have placed in our hands, Father. Lord, I pray for wisdom beyond this room, Father, and discernment of what you are speaking. What is best for your people? We pray for all of these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people said. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Councilmember Orth.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gornick.
Here.
And Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda approval additions and or deletion, Mary.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, we need to add a subsequent need item to closed session. The rules for subsequent need items are that the city may act upon an item not appearing on a regular agenda upon a finding that there is a need for immediate action and the need for action came to the attention of the local agency after the agenda was posted. So there was an item that came to the attention of the city this afternoon. And so we need to place this on for closed session for significant exposure to litigation. So it meets the threshold, assuming that four fifths of the council approve likewise motion.
So you need a second?
You, one of you needs to make the motion in the second.
So move on your request.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Gornick and then second by Councilmember Orth, Councilmember Gornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Orth.
Hi.
Councilmember Garza.
Hi.
Councilmember Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote I as well.
And then also if we can move closed session to the end of the meeting in light of the number of people you have here, they'd be waiting.
Do we just make consensus for that?
Yes.
Do we have consensus to do that?
To do that.
Let him wait. I'm kidding. Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so moving on to study session two dash one general fund budget strategy workshop, Mr. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The first part of the presentation tonight will be given by Retail Strategies. Ms. Brookley Valencia is here for that along with her colleague, John Mark. So I'll introduce Brookley, come on up.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Matthews and City Councilmembers.
Can you move the microphone closer to you?
Sure, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, apologies. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us present to you tonight. My name is Brookley Valencia. I am the Portfolio Director for the West Coast Territory for Retail Strategies. My colleague, John Mark Boozer, is the Retail Development Coordinator for the West Coast Territory. We have been in this partnership with Lamore for just a little over a year at this point. We've had some really exciting conversations with brokers, developers, retailers, and of course have been working with Nathan this whole time and that communication as well. So excited to tell you a little bit about that tonight. And just to preface, a little bit later in the slideshow, we will get into some properties we've been focusing on, some retailers we've been working with. All those names will be redacted. We can't discuss that in a public setting. But just so you know, those generic names will be listed on there. There we go. A little bit about our company. So Retail Strategies is a full-service advisory firm working with cities for retail recruitment. We act as an extension of your economic development team specifically for that retail recruitment. And our team employs a commercial broker's mindset with a fiduciary responsibility to the city. Retail Strategies, we have a few different branches under our umbrella, Retail Recruitment. Currently, the partnership we are in, we also offer Downtown Strategies, Small Business Support, and Retail Academy, which is the little sister to retail recruitment. It's more of an educational piece. A little bit about our process. So at first, when we partner with the city, we really want to understand it from a retail lens. We want to understand the data and demographics beyond just your boundary lines. We want to see it, how a retailer sees it, and we'll get into that in just a few more slides based off radius rings and drive times, which really expand on your market. We also perform a boots-on-the-ground tour is what we call it. We want to come into your market within the first one hundred days of the partnership. And we want to tour and look at the real estate assets and create a property catalog of viable sites. We also provide trade show representation. So we attend every ICSC conference. That is our industry conference. We attend ICSC Las Vegas, which is the big industry conference, ICSC Monterey, and ICSC Western, which is typically in San Diego. We attend those to build those working relationships with those key industry players, learn about their expansion plans, and then of course to promote the city of Lamore as well. We call it pleasant persistence. So our team constantly is reaching out to retailers, brokers, property owners, discussing viable sites and putting those in front of those retailers. We want to put you at the front of the line and the front of their mind. We're an investment multiplier. We act as an extension of your economic development team in hopes to start those retail conversations and create interest with those retailers. And then we're your relationship agent or your retail matchmaker. Again, we're trying to use our industry experience, our network to help promote your city. Oh, that was the wrong slide the whole time? No, okay. Sorry about that. Retail timeline, just a little bit about the process to showcase for you all. This graphic just indicates that it is a long process. It can take anywhere from eighteen to thirty-six months to get a retail deal done. And that's if everything goes according to plan. Investors in Wall Street decide how many stores that need to be opened. A real estate director is tasked with that effort and knows the growth in numbers. The local tenant rep is then set to identify markets and identify sites in their territory. That tenant rep will push those to the real estate director. They'll run economics pro forma, see if the site pencils out. If it does, if pencil out, they'll perform or send a letter of intent. It will go to real estate committee. It will either be voted up or voted down after all of that work. But if it's voted up, a lease, a developer gets involved, if they're not already, and the store doors are open. Oh, gosh. I apologize. This slide is animated. Okay. Universal metrics or criteria that we're typically looking for is that signage and visibility, that frontage, the parking spaces, the access ingress egress, if it's on a hard corner, if there's a signalized light, co-tenancy, so that retail synergy, as well as traffic counts. This graphic indicates why municipalities, cities should invest in retail recruitment. As you can see, it's a ladder and it builds on itself. So you can see that an IHOP can create any upwards of a million dollar in revenue. And on a one percent annual tax base for the city, that would create ten thousand in revenue and city sales tax. But if you go up to the big guys, Costco, Home Depot, that is upwards of forty million and on a one percent annual tax base for the city sales tax, it would be four hundred thousand. Retail synergy is very important. They like to follow each other. So even you can start building small and that allows your city to better attract other retailers. So during the discovery phase, again, like I said earlier, we want to see your market, not just by boundary lines, we want to see how a retailer is looking at it. And that is by radius rings and by drive time. So they want to see how many folks from a ten-minute drive time or a ten-mile radius can get to their store, which can greatly expand your market. So you can see from this demographic playbook, it is run from the grocery outlet. On a three-mile radius, the population is twenty-seven thousand six hundred forty-six, but on a ten-mile radius, it grows to one hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven. Same thing with that five-minute drive time and a five-minute drive time run from the pinpoint at the grocery outlet. That population is nineteen thousand four hundred thirty-seven. And on a fifteen-minute drive time, eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. So you can see that again, your market can grow exponentially depending on how a retailer chooses to look at it. We are also able to run mobile insights, collect mobile data. So this trade area, we call it the custom trade area, is run from the Lamore Plaza. And so when a user with the cell phone goes into the Lamore Plaza, it has a geofence. It pings the tower that you've walked into that geofence you've shopped there. It also is able to tell where you spend the majority of your evening hours, which it assumes is your home base. So you can see where folks are traveling from their home to shop at Lamore Plaza, where it is shaded on the heat map in that darker purple pink color. That is where the majority, the higher percentage is coming from. But the lighter shade area means you're capturing from from that far as well. So we are able to draw a polygon around that to create a custom trade area. And we are able to gather data again around that custom trade area. So market opportunity is one of those factors that we capture. We can tell within that custom trade area, the total consumer demand, one billion four hundred and thirty-five million versus the total market supply within that custom trade area, six hundred and ninety-six million. And then the opportunity gap, what those dollars that you could potentially capture, seven hundred and thirty-eight million. Also, it breaks it down into establishment type or category for that type of store. And this is listed from highest to lowest. So building material and garden equipment stores, sixty-three million. Clothing and footwear stores, forty-eight million. Food service and drinking places, thirty-nine million. Home furnishing stores, twenty million. Food and beverage stores, seventeen million. Sporting goods, hobby, music stores, sixteen million. General merchandise stores, four million. So this again, almost five million. This is within that custom trade area from Lamore Plaza. Additionally, again, we are looking at some properties, of course, in the area focusing on for recruitment. The former Kmart, that is a priority of ours. It's a second generation space. That means that is an existing box. So construction costs have gone up. So second generation spaces are very popular, always have been, but especially now with the high construction costs. We have been in conversations with a broker representing the space and we have flagged this site to retailers. The broker has mentioned that some national retail brands have made offers on the site, all to have been turned down by the owner. So we are going to continue to put this in front of retailers in hopes that we can find a deal that the owner of the box would want to move forward with. The Gateway Plaza, there's some pad sites there that are listed. We flagged this for a developer for a potential build-to-suit opportunity. This developer did have conversations with the owner of that pad site. There were some differences in the deal structure. So that deal has fallen through currently. But we will continue highlighting these pad sites again to retailers and developers in hopes of bringing retail to these sites that works with owner. There's new commercial development as well. We've connected with a local developer who currently has a few different sites in the market tied up. And we've reached out to potential retailers regarding these sites and passed along that interest to the developer. Some active recruitment prospects. So these retailers, again, names are redacted. QSR stands for Quick Service Restaurant or Fast Food. So the burger QSR and the coffee chain both came from ICSC Monterey, one of those industry conferences that we attend. We learned that this burger QSR and this coffee chain were interested in a new development site in the market. However, this developer is not currently pursuing the site. They ran, they're out of escrow currently. So our team then reached out to another developer that we know working on sites in the market and have pitched this interest to them in hopes of housing them on his development site. A Mexican QSR, we connected with the tenant rep for this QSR brand to discuss their market interests. We knew that they had previously been looking in the market, but that deal had fallen through. They are currently working on another site in the market and we are continuing to monitor and shepherd these conversations. And should any issues arise, we quickly address those with Nathan to help try to mitigate any issues. National hotel brand at ICSC Las Vegas this year in May, our contact with this national hotel brand mansion expansion in the western region. However, he noted that Lamore was not a priority target market. We then reached back out to him as we often do. We always say no now is not a no forever. We're always, retailers are always changing their expansion plans. So we're always constantly reaching back out to touch base and see their current stance. So we reached back out to discuss Lamore, talked about potential incentives as well. He is interested in the market now and he is currently reviewing sites and we're awaiting his feedback. And just an economic impact slide to showcase how if this burger QSR and this coffee chain were to come into the market, that economic impact that it creates. So the estimated average annual revenue for the burger QSR, three million, three hundred thousand. For the coffee chain, a million, six hundred thousand. So that estimated total revenue from those two, four million, nine hundred thousand. And then the combined jobs that they would create around thirty-five new jobs. And then on a one percent sales tax for the city, forty-nine thousand dollars. We will continue to do, form outreach to retailers, brokers, property owners. Everyone that we can, we share the common goal to create these new conversations that wouldn't otherwise happen to put your market again at the front of the line. We've conducted outreach to over forty-five retailers, ranging from multitudes of different topics of grocers and coffee, quick serve, fast casual hotels, et cetera. And together, we continue to collaborate with Nathan and our partners here at Lamore to discuss how to bring those new-to-market retailers to Lamore and discuss potential incentives that we can offer as well. Thank you for your time tonight. I'll bring up my colleague, John Mark Boozer, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I've got a couple. When you, you begin to look for opportunities for the city of Lamore, do you take in consideration what we currently have in terms of commercial assets? For example, on your presentation, you mentioned restaurants. And you mentioned Mexican restaurants. My concern is for the number of Mexican restaurants we have in town and to keep them in business. Not necessarily to bring in additional Mexican restaurants to compete with their business. Okay? So that's, that's one thing I'm concerned about. Same thing with with coffee. Right? We just had a new coffee vendor open up. And it's not that I'm opposed to bringing in business, but you know, if we're noted for the number of coffee shops we have, how are the other vendors doing? You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's, the market can only be so big. The other thing that we've had some, I've talked with some significant retailers in Hanford before I came on the council. And somebody's leaning up against the lights. And the they indicated to me that some of the big retailers there are at a hundred and twenty-five percent capacity. And they're having difficulty with parking lot issues, theft issues. Everybody's having issue with supply chain issues, but they're having significant issues keeping things on a shelf because of supply chain issues, but the fact that there's just a significant amount of people using the store. And you know, I'd like to see somebody like that come in and compete with another retailer in another town that would generate significant revenue for us and not necessarily potentially injure our current commercial properties that we have going on. So that's just kind of my take on it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for sharing. In regards to your comments about the Mexican QSR and the coffee chain. So we really see a nice retail synergy. By no means do we want to add too much to the market or take away from those local restaurateurs. There's really a nice retail synergy between these national brands and the local brands. It just creates help a drive. Some people know the name recognition of these national brands. And if there's a site that specifically fits a QSR, there are certain sites that are, you know, meant for those drive-through or those fast casual QSR sites. So it's who is not currently in the market or potentially who is in the market that is looking to expand, which is a good thing. That means they are, you know, overrun at their current store and they see high numbers enough to add another store. So both of those could be, are considered good for, for retail and those specific sites that fit those fast food criteria, site requirements would attract that type of user. We do, we're not just trying to reach out to a Mexican QSR if the market is oversaturated. Those are the retailers that have noted their interest. We've reached out to chicken users, burger users, ice cream, yogurt. Sit-down restaurants. We do, we run it all and addressing those big box. We do know that Hanford is oversaturated in that type of retail and we, and the good thing about that is they will be looking to move into nearby markets to expand because they are overrun. So that is how we're trying to position Lamore as well, and we are having those conversations. A lot of those big boxes, like the Kmart per se, it's hard to get a deal with the current owner that he would be okay moving forward with at the time. And then for new construction, again, that's, it's costly right now and it's hard to do. But we are talking with developers and we are talking with, you know, those property owners and those brokers to try and help move that deal forward for whenever they are ready to move and accept a deal. We, we have it ready for it. It's, it's pending. It's in the pipeline. We have somebody interested. We have multiple people interested and they're ready to move on that site when it's ready.
Are you familiar with Los Montes?
Yes.
See now, that, that's a operation that has expanded, significant investment, local guy, local family. You know? And I'd hate to see you pull in a Taco Bell, you know, within a quarter mile of that place, you know? On, on either west side of forty-one or whatever. I mean, I, I just, I just would hate to see that, you know? I mean, I, I gotta find other ways to make money, I think so. That's my two cents.
Anyone else, else on council have any questions or comments? I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there any public that would like to comment on this study session? This, this item? Seeing none? Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Do you have a business card or? You got it. Nathan's got it. Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brookley?
I actually get one.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy this. Oh, there's more.
Sorry, she was the first part. I'm the second part.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the general fund budget strategy workshop. So I'm should, should make for good conversation tonight. So I'll be, I'll be going through the slides. I'm really hoping we can have some open dialogue and conversations versus just regurgitating everything and then.
Screw down to the podium.
Yeah, I can if you'd like.
No.
Grab all my stuff.
No. I thought you were kidding.
I thought you were kidding too.
Hey, we need to get to it, Stan.
A little stool.
All right, can you hear me okay? All right. So anyway, like I said, I'm hoping to have a good, open conversation this evening. Feel free to ask all the questions you want. Stop me if you need to. And we will, we will jump right in. So first of all, it's the general fund budget review. We're talking about some operational objectives and then the budget balancing options. And I have to say, I lost my trifocals, so I can see with these cheaters here, but I can't see anything beyond this. So I'm going to be doing a lot of glasses on and off, so my apologies. But so our historical analysis, right, in twenty sixteen of May, the city council adopted fiscal policies which outline the requirement to adopt balanced budgets. What the, what was defined as a balanced budget was one that revenues and reserves must be greater than or equal to annual expenditures. It also stated that we had to have thirty-five percent reserves as part of that equation. So up until now, until this last budget we passed, just last few months, we've met those requirements. So staff brought it to council's attention and now we're here having these conversations. If things continue on the way they are, and we'll go through this, but next year budget cycle, we won't be able to fulfill, fulfill this requirement of our own resolution. So we're here to kind of talk about options, what we want to do and, and how to move forward from here. So we're solving for a couple of year problem, but we're going to have to start reacting as a staff here probably this fiscal year, depending on, on direction and how we do things. We are expecting our reserves to be at eight point one million dollars in June of twenty-four, just so to speak. So pretty good shape currently. The trend, so annual deficits are a result of the.
I'm going to ask you about the reserves. Didn't, didn't, didn't we change the percentage of the reserves at one meeting? Didn't we, did we take it from a higher number to the?
I don't believe, we may have talked about, I don't think we ever passed a resolution or, or had it, had it done.
Talked about it.
Yeah, because right now it's thirty-five. So we're anticipating roughly a nineteen million dollar budget for next year. So that's, you know, what, six, six million or so we'd have to have in reserves? And if, if nothing happens from today till this time, when we budget next year, we're going to have to cut probably close to three million dollars out of the budget to meet the requirement of our, of our fiscal resolution.
Yeah. I think it was in that discussion of maybe not this budget, but the prior budget where we talked about. I think it was a revelation to some of us that the reserve was that high. The requirement was that high.
And that's it, council's discretion and I'd love to have that conversation because personally, I think once we get through tonight, we're going to have to potentially lower that threshold to stave off maybe some, some negative impacts of trying to make the budget whole with that in place. Okay, so current trends though are, are revenues and we took this data back from twenty eighteen. These are actual numbers. So revenues increased an average of eight percent per year since twenty eighteen. They've also expenditures, though unfortunately are averaging twelve percent increase every year. So as you can see by the slide, we're continually running, running negative because we're, our revenues do not meet the expenditures year over year. So here's what we've done economic wise since twenty eighteen. So we've increased sales tax revenue by eighty-five percent. That's a pretty good story. So you know, economic development, we're bringing in businesses. It's working. Unfortunately, you saw in the past presentation, you can bring in a Costco and a Walmart on that upper tier and expect to get about four hundred thousand dollars in annual income to your community. So it takes a lot of, a lot of economic development to shore up the gap we're looking at. So that, so proud of staff. I think they've, they've done well over the years. It's just, you know, our best wasn't, isn't good enough to keep up with the, the cost of doing business these days. We've also brought in an additional two point eight million in cannabis revenue raising fee. So that's in addition to the sales tax. So pretty good stories there. I'll go ahead. Housing growth. So we've had four hundred and six or four hundred and seven permits pulled since twenty eighteen. Housing's, it's a good thing, right? We need it for the community. We need it for growth. We need rooftops for economic development for other people to want to take a look at us. But the flip side to that is every time we add houses, you still have police, fire, public safety that you have to provide for. And we're currently running only one beat south of the railroad tracks. We would really like to have two beats there. So you've got, you know, one officer running around south of town patrolling that on his own. Now, we have backup and help if they need it. But we'd really already in today's, with our population of today and everything we have in the books, the chief has come to me multiple times and said, hey, we need a fourth beat. We just haven't had the, the money to bring that to council and put it to fruition. So housing's good, but there is that offset. We have to provide services for it. So our opportunities. And see this one here, Helena Agro Business, right? We've been talking about them for what's going on, three years now? They're supposed to break ground in November. Trying to be partially operational next year, but we're probably a two-full or a budget and a half budget cycle, but they're, before they are fully operational. That should give us a pretty good little, little uptick just because of the sheer volume they do. They're a forty million dollar retailer on their own. So that could be potentially there about eighty-five percent retail, about three hundred and eighty-five thousand. That could be potentially there about eighty five percent retail, about three hundred and eighty five thousand. Coming into new revenues to the city in another year and a half out. And that was where they were at when we first started talking. They they're they intend to be a sixty million dollar company by the end of the century. Which would be great for us. And they are consolidating all three locations to Lamoore out of Hanford and Fresno. So we're getting the the whole company lock, stock and barrel. Couple other ones coming Panda Express, moving right along, probably will be December, January timeframe before you see. Power and get them powered up and open. Baskin Robbins is coming over by Kmart. They've dropped. Tenant improvement plans to start that process. So hopefully that'll. Finish off and then Didi's discounts like a Ross, they're going in over in Pioneer Square over by. The grocery outlet. Then we also have Maverick. So there should be, they're in final plan checks. Maverick is a America's first stop, they call it. They have. I think wood fired food options they offer, drinks, beverages, they're kind of a miniature truck stop, which should fare well. We get three hundred and fifty trucks daily going through La Prino. Hopefully they like that spot or continue to go over, you know, to the. Borough side over there on nineteenth as well. So looking for that, that's a big a big draw. We'll have the first Maverick within about two hundred and fifty miles of this area. So they chose. This site for their first expansion into the the valley. So pretty proud of that. The other things we're doing to become. To drive business activities or pro businesses, we're looking at some ordinance revisions, kind of streamlining processes to make it not so long. To get through planning commission council on certain items that are. Very defined in our ordinances that if these parameters are met. Then you should be able to build. So we're trying to put more on staff for approvals. We'll be bringing that to council very shortly. Looking at incentive opportunities. We're gonna have to, uh, talking with retail strategies, I'll be coming to council. Here shortly because the one thing we talk about at ICSC, I'm like, what can we do as a city to help? Drive more conversation. And he said, it's not so much having a booth there because we use their booth, but it's getting contacts meeting with them. But what's gonna really set us out is if we can do something to incentivize some of these bigger people to come into town. And that could be anything that we could do reduced fees. You know. If you so desire, we could do some potential. Sales tax sharing revenues. And I know that's hard pill to swallow when I'm saying we're broke and I want to share revenues, but we've got to do something to to get that final draw. We did have a developer. That had a site plan that included two hotels, but. Couldn't get the hotels to commit, so he backed out of escrow last week. So things we can do to combat that is go out and do a hotel feasibility study. They're like twelve thousand dollars, but that study is good for multiple years. That may be enough. To get one of those those businesses to move. No guarantees, don't know. But I will be meeting with those companies that were were on the hook and they're still kind of on the hook, but just. The the property is not working out yet. So I'll be meeting with them. The mayor is going to ICSC with me down in San Diego next month.
No, Nathan, two. You know, on that on that slide, you got two businesses for sure. Maverick and Helena.
And Panda.
And Panda.
Didi's.
But those two. You know, they they have a story to tell about why they're why they moved to Lamoore. And. You know, one of the things that. Maybe they would be willing to. Provide some testimony to that, you know, in terms of. What you and the city been able to do for them to get them here and our location and stuff like that. I mean, sometimes it's better for. A business to say that to other businesses than, you know, for for us to do it or for. Our developers to have that testimony in hand when they go talk to people, yeah. Just a thought.
Yeah, it's a good thought. Thank you. Want to go to the next slide? So operational objectives, we have. Really three things. One, increase revenues. Two, decrease expenditures or combination of both. Right now I'm operating in the combination of both. Just because. I'm going to be giving you multiple options, but all of our options besides active, which we kind of control in house. Require something to go to a voter in some way, shape or form. So I'm gonna be going through multiple facets over the next few minutes of this. Conversation and then. Really looking for some consensus from council and I know it's a lot fast for you to give me consensus tonight, but I would be looking for consensus in in the near future at a. At another council because staff and we got to figure out when to start pulling levers and and how do we how to react and when to react? To make sure that we. Stay viable. So. Increase revenue. So increasing sales tax revenue, do that two ways. When we get more businesses and more businesses in that generate sales tax. Or we do a sales tax allocation, do a sales tax measure. That's one option. We are still the. One of two at seven point two five in California, us in Hanford. We are down there by ourselves on the on the bottom end of that chain. Everybody else around us in the valley has already taken on additional sales tax measures. And been approved by their voters. We can increase property tack revenues through a bond. And that's kind of the same as implementing a parcel tax, just different. The parcel tax, the monies are collected. And then paid to the city where as a bond, we go out for a bond. It's covered by the fees collected on the parcel tax. We pay the bond back, but we get the the dollars upfront. Our bond council doesn't, did not recommend that we look at a bond under current circumstances and that just a parcel tax. Would be a much better option than bonding currently. The other thing we can look at is our transit occupancy tax. So a T O T taxes, anytime you stay at a hotel, you pay that. It's for really stays thirty days or less. The city currently is.
Nathan, how much would a T O T?
So right now we currently charge eight percent T O T and that that nets the city about four hundred thousand dollars a year. On tax. So for every one percent we increase T O T, it's about fifty thousand dollars.
And what's what's going rate?
I think Hanford's at eight or nine right now. I did talk with one of the hotel managers a while ago and they said. Ten percent could probably be tolerated in our area without people going out and looking for another hotels, but. Me personally, I don't ask what the T O T rate is. I just say how much for the night and. And I get shocked when I see all the other taxes they put on it and all the different fees. So. But if if you did, if you said, hey, Nathan, you and staff go out and go after two percent T O T. That'd be worth like a hundred thousand dollars. If you did four percent, it'd be worth two hundred thousand.
If you. So you were, you've got these up here that those the utility tax, the T O T and the parcel tax. Would be paid to the city. As as an income stream. So there there, there's nothing in here to. For any capital projects for the city.
No, 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 not not yet.
That we need to focus on. I mean, have you have you looked at that in terms of? Kind of things.
Well, right now the general fund doesn't have any money to really do a whole lot of capital. So I talked to our bond company about, well, what if we bonded for a project? And he's like, well, so I guess if we could figure out a project that would generate. Enough dollars to help shore up our gap. But have enough to pay back the bond. But to like shore things with a bond isn't recommended. Our our water bond was thirty million and the payment on that's a million dollars a year. Give or take maybe one point one or something. But. So. Bonds is something we can absolutely look at, but right now I'm just, we're still kind of. Looking at everything we have. I have called around and talked to some of the other cities about their field of dreams. That's that whole thing. We we talked about it many years ago where you build a. A big four stadium facility, one's a replica stadium, there's restaurants, which and everything tied to it. It would go well out by the college. I've already floated it by the college as well as N A S Lamoore. I mean, their ears perked up, but that's about as far as we got with it. But those are about fourteen million dollars. To build, but every city I've talked to, they're making a little bit of money. And they like them because you hold like forty to forty five events a year out of those things on the weekends. So that helps drive retail, helps drive some, you know, more T O T tax.
Residential.
But on the flip side of that, without having to spend the fourteen. Million dollars and going to bond, we've also talked to. Chase from Little League has been in my office a few times to talk about maybe partnering with Little League because they travel up and down this valley. Doing. Tournaments and. He said our park on nineteenth Avenue would be a very nice site to look to do some local tournaments. So he's run up some numbers. There might be some kind of partnership we do. With Little League and do some revenue sharing. They'll run the tournament, run the programs, but then the city can see some. Some revenue from it. So we're in the very early stages of talking about that as well. The other tack, we talked about the T O T. The other one's a user utility tax. We currently don't have a U U T. And that's a tax you can put on just about any kind of service for water, sewer, trash, telecommunications, cell phones. Electricity, gas. If you ran the numbers on just city utilities, water, sewer, trash and did a five percent U U T. It would generate about nine hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to the general fund. I don't have numbers for U U Ts for all the other utilities because I haven't been able to get that data yet, but depending on. How and what a U U T tax is usually anywhere from one percent to eleven percent. Is what you can, what you can go on. And for the parcel tax. Or even a bond on property tax. For every parcel, if you flat rated a hundred, it'd be about a hundred and thirty dollars. Per parcel. For every million dollars of revenues we want to raise. So if a parcel tax was something we wanted to do and you wanted to raise. Four million dollars, it would cost the average parcel owner in town. Five hundred. Twenty seven, five hundred and twenty dollars a year.
So so per hundred thousand, what what's the rate on that?
One thirty per million.
No, no.
Sorry.
Three hundred thousand dollar home. What's the what's the rate on a three hundred?
It's it's just a flat rate. It's a hundred and thirty dollars per parcel. It's a parcel tax.
Whether you got a. Five hundred thousand dollar home or a hundred fifty thousand dollar home.
On the parcel. Yes, it's just a flat rate. Yeah, it's flat rate. We have about seventy seven, seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty four parcels of Lamoore.
And that's like the apartments would pay. Because they're one parcel.
Yes. So whoever's owner on record on that property would would pay the parcel fee if we opt to go that way.
How much money would that generate? I was writing.
For every hundred and thirty dollars, which so for every million in revenue we want to raise, it would be a a fee of a hundred and thirty dollars per parcel. If you own one property in Lamoore, it costs you a hundred and thirty dollars to raise a million bucks. Okay, so now we have a sales tax measure. So a local sales tax measure has the potential to significantly impact general fund revenues. A simple majority is needed, so fifty plus one. To pass that, a measure would help maintain. Fiscal stability and provide locally controlled funding to provide essential services. An approval of the city council is necessary in order for the measure to be placed on the November twenty twenty four ballot. I'm still kind of struggling. If originally I was wanting to try to push a sales tax initiative if councils chose that direction. And I wanted to go on the early primary, so in March. But I think it's a little rushed. I think we have to. Do our homework. Put out some good numbers, allow people to have the time to really digest and ask the right questions. So. We're we're looking at November twenty four then for the for the presidential election. If we opt to go that way. Additional tax options, we already talked about them earlier, but the user utility tax, again, that can be. One to eleven percent and you can tax pretty much all utilities. Parcel tax again.
Nathan.
Yes.
Anyone in this in this Kings County, Tyler County, Fresno County uses this U U T?
Yeah, I'll cover that in a few slides. If if we can, if not, I can jump forward. But yeah, I have that information. To kind of show comps on sales tax and who has a U U T and who doesn't. But yes, we have that. And then we talked about the parcel tax and the.
Question on the parcel tax.
Pardon me?
I have a quick question on the parcel.
Yes, ma'am.
Tax. Is that in perpetuity or does that sunset? Or how does that work for a parcel tax?
So I guess I would defer to legal, but you can have it either way. You can go in perpetuity or you. I don't know if you sunset those.
You've got to have some kind of a. What are you going to use it for? I mean, if it if you're going to use it as income to the city, you'd have to. Put some kind of a limit on that its use or if you if you wanted to raise X number of dollars. You know.
Yeah. Roads and. So the the needs general fund, right, which is police, fire, parks and recreation. Maintenance. I mean, essentially that's your. That's what keeps it going, our streets, right? We did that. Traffic study on on how well our roads did. I think it was two years ago and I think we were had the best roads in Kings County. Except well, Corcoran beat us by one point on the on the chart. Well, at the time we're spending about one, seven, two million a year on road repairs. That study told us two years ago that in order to maintain where we're currently at. At the same grade and same level on the pavement managing index, we'd have to double our efforts. To like three to four million a year. And they said if we want to get next level streets. And hit that next level, it'd be about a nine or ten million dollar a year. Maintenance cost, so. That's where those those dollars would go. They'd be to maintain. Police. Roads. Things of that nature. And again, that's all language will work out once. Staff and we get direction on where we're gonna go and where we're gonna head or whatever combinations we may choose to do down the road. Here's our sales tax history. So you can see it's going up. But back in eighteen, it was what about one point, one point eight million? And we're up to about three point three now. You'll see twenty three and twenty four have an asterisk. That twenty four number dips. That is because that's the number we currently have from H D L. So twenty three and twenty four on this chart, those are the. Latest and greatest numbers we've gotten. From H D L. Why they suspect sales tax revenues to go down in twenty four? Don't know, but that numbers, they've been reporting that same number for over a year. I I would expect an adjustment as we get closer to twenty four, because if you look historically, it it typically trends. Up ever so slightly year over year. I just wanted to call that one out. And then one other thing too. So our general fund. Our biggest driver of tax dollars is fuel driven. About forty two percent is fuel. So when fuel is four dollars and fifty cents a gallon. And people are still driving, we're living pretty good. Fuel drops down to three dollars or two eighty nine a gallon, that is an absolute direct impact. You can see. Our numbers on sales tax for fuel fluctuate. That's probably our. Our biggest fluctuation market wise right now is is fuel sales, but fuel sales do make up about forty two percent of the city's revenues. So we're very dependent on fuel. Our current sales tax is seven point two five. So what that means is for. For every dollar collected, six cents goes to the state. Lamoore keeps a penny. And a quarter goes to local transportation. So if we did a potential one point five percent, now, these are just numbers we threw in for purposes only and.
Was this the number you you we tried last time?
No, we tried one percent last time.
Okay.
And it and we were going on a special tax, so we needed two thirds majority. And we received between forty seven and forty eight percent. When we tried it right as COVID was hitting. So on this one, that would take us up to eight point seven five percent and historic or council member in a few slides, you're gonna see all the all the comps. Which would basically. Add an additional one and a half cent sales tax to the city. So if you see the chart, we're currently about three point three million. That would given us an additional five million in revenue and we're solving for about a four million dollar problem as we sit here or four, yeah, four million dollar problem as we sit here today. So. That's what that potential could look like. Through a two percent on here, that's a nine point two five. That's the highest tax rate in the valley or anybody around here has. Porterville.
And who has it?
Porterville has nine point two five. So that would be just six cents to the state and then three cents to Lamoore. Then again, just a quarter to the local transportation fund. So these are just, these are just options. If you.
Would those would those have to be implemented? All at one time?
I do not believe so. I believe. Once you establish your rate, you can go up to that rate whenever you want, and you can even go down from that rate. Without a vote, you just can't go above that.
Above that rate.
So. And and I've never seen it done. In the history of government, but I'd like to be the first. If we were to do something like that and we didn't need it. I would be the first one to come to the council and be like, hey, things are looking pretty good. Or this and that happened. Let's cut back a half or a quarter. Just saying, I would be the first one to do that. I am not a fan of fees and taxes. But unfortunately, in my role. I have to do what's best for the city and I have an obligation to bring this to you and for you to give me direction, but. This is this is a tough one for me to even come here and ask for. It really is. Especially knowing our town.
Yeah.
I mean, we're we're a pretty conservative town here. So this isn't an easy conversation to sit here and have. It really isn't.
Yeah. Yeah, just because we can do it doesn't mean we have to do it all.
Right.
My thought is it was we can grow into it, that might be a better.
Go to the next slide there.
Hold on.
Yep.
Mr. Worth has a question. Come back one. The three point three four nine four three three nine four two seven seven. What's that rep?
That green?
Yeah.
That's currently what we have at one percent.
Blue would be.
Blue would be additional.
What would we would go to?
Blue would be in addition to the three million we're getting now.
We have another six or we would be another three?
No, it'd be another on that one's six. It would take. Yep. So at one five, at one five, if we did nothing else but pass the one point five percent sales tax, that buys us a year before we're back in the same boat. We're out of money. That's if we do nothing else, but just raise a one point five. Staff has never allowed that to happen yet. We brought deficit budgets. Um, by the dollar, but not by our definition to council and we always don't hire cut back here and there and we've, we've made it work. But, um, believe those days are over and, and what was a real telltale was during COVID, we received six, six million plus in ARPA funding. And at the time they gave us funding, there was very specific things you could use that money for. And they changed the rules at the very end. But that would be the equivalent of us of having a one cent sales tax for the last couple of years. Cause that was just free money, putting your general fund. And that's what kept us afloat. Or we would have been having this conversation already a year ago. So, um, were you good on that? So Dave, any, your council member or anything in blue is additional on top of what we already have. Hey, so right here. So this is kind of showing, I'm sorry, it's, it's a lot of information on that slide. But we show Lamar at, um, seven, where it's currently at, then we show it right down in the middle at eight point seven five. And then we show it way down a second from the bottom. And I, I had her add Porterville in because they were, they were as high as my highest number went. But there's also more to tell on that story besides just that. Go to the next slide. So if you look at some of these sales tax breakdowns, so Fireba is already charging seven point nine seven five. But they also have a ten percent U U T tax on top of that. So what that means is they're charging an additional ten percent user utility tax and that's bringing them in an additional, um, million dollars a year on top of their what they're already charging on a sales tax. Dynuva has a eight point five percent sales tax. They're charging a seven percent U U T. They're bringing in additional one point seven million dollars on that U U T. Exeter, eight point seven five. They also have a five percent U T that's bringing in additional six hundred and eighty thousand dollars revenues. Um, now I have to go around, but Porterville, this is the interesting one. Porterville is at nine point two five, highest, highest sales tax base in California. They have a six percent U U T that generates an additional four point six million dollars on top of their sales tax. So as you can see, a lot of these towns of our size.
Close to sizes, but we are, yeah.
Yeah, they're doing combinations of sales tax measures, U U Ts, franchise fees, and we, we already get franchise fees. So there's a lot of different things to do, but without getting in the direction of the percentages, we gotta, we gotta start formulating a plan. So I'm, I'm giving you a lot of, a lot of options and a lot of information. Okay, you want to go there? So the cost to the average citizen. So, um, these are the latest numbers from the US Bureau's, uh, labor uh, labor statistics. Household median income is up to about seventy one thousand dollars in the more. Um, so right now, they say that you spend about forty percent of your tax of your bring home income on taxable items. So using that analogy, the average person, if they make median income, spends about twenty four, twenty five dollars a month on sales tax. Currently in the more. If you did a one point five increase, they would spend an additional thirty six dollars monthly. And that two percent would cost about forty eight dollars. Now, one thing to keep in mind on these sales tax measures is that's what we're collecting today. So we're at one percent. If every business in Lamar doubled their sales this year. And if everybody that shops online doubled their purchases online that got delivered to Lamar, that would get the city additional three point three million. We're still short. If I brought in a Costco, a Walmart and a, uh, pick one, Home Depot or Lowe's, still short. So I, I need a combination. We're going to keep bringing in that Eck Dev and, and looking for different things, but we need help. You know, I just got my tax bill from the, the county office for my my little, uh, pontoon boat I like to run around in. And there's like eight bonds on there, you know, two for the high school, a couple for elementary, six bonds for the college. We've been very good as a city of taking care of our, our kids and our schools. Well, we need to take care of our city. And first of all, it's public safety. Public safety is the biggest, it's going to be the biggest impact if I gotta start cutting budgets. Let's go ahead. So impacts to expenditures. If we put a revenue raising measure to vote and it's not passed, then we'll have to start making, um, some pretty substantial cuts in the city. So we would freeze all merit increases. So basically as a, as a city employee annually with a, with a standard or better evaluation, you get it, you get an increase five percent. Um, we looked at potentially a four day work week for reduction in energy costs. Not a lot of savings, but a little bit. Um, a hiring freeze, we've already done that. So we've already froze one position at P D and one position in maintenance. Um, just currently, because the last thing we want to do is go out, hire people if we got to turn it on, lay people off. So right now we're kind of assessing as the positions become available. And if we're going to replace it or not. So currently we have two, two positions frozen. This is the tough one. Looking at potentially fifty percent reduction in the police department workforce.
How do you see that?
How do I see that?
Yeah, what, tell, tell us a little bit about that. What, what do you?
So.
That's a big number.
Yeah, so PD's over sixty percent of our general fund. And out of their cost to the general fund, I believe it's sixty three percent. Sixty what, eight? Sixty eight percent is the cost of, cost of personnel. So that's really where.
So we'll translate that in English. Is that a layoff?
Yes, it would be an elimination of positions.
Okay.
Now they would be eligible for, I think if things straightened out and they came back a year, um, within a year, they just, they just come back, come back to work.
And that's the kind of reduction we'd have to make, just the balance.
That would be a, if, if we keep our fiscal policy the same.
Right.
That says I have to have a thirty five. There's just a couple of things depending on this goes, because if, if council says Nathan, you and staff, go get a sales tax measure. We're not going to know till November of next year, if we get it or not. Well, we have budgets April, May, June to pass. So then I guess the question is, okay, how good are we feeling about the sales tax measure? Do we start making cuts earlier or do we just hold on and say, okay, fine, we're going to make all our adjustments mid-year twenty four or January of twenty five. And we're just going to go in and if this thing fails, we're going to cut with one fell swoop. One thing I think the staff in the city has done maybe too good is continue to operate during these rough years without really feeling any impact by our community. Um, if, if we choose the latter and choose to wait till January at twenty five, if we don't get a revenue stream, it's going to be one, it'd be one big gigantic hit. I, I mean, that's just being honest.
So.
Don't want to do that. I.
So fifty percent reduction is how many dollars?
Four million, seven hundred sixty thousand roughly.
It's about four million, I think. I'd have to double check on the, on the salaries portion.
It would be helpful to, it would be helpful to not for, just for me, but also I think the general public to see what these.
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, the
Or maybe you have it.
Percent would be somewhere in the ballpark of two and like two and a half million bucks.
Okay.
If, if my memory serves, but I'll absolutely.
Two and a half million for what?
It's just personnel.
For savings on personnel.
Do you have numbers for all of these? Um, or can you get numbers for all of these options?
So when you say eliminate the rec department, what, what, what are you talking about?
So if we didn't have a recreation department, you're looking at probably about three hundred thousand dollars. But now you have no programming for any of your kids.
Or for our seniors.
Or for your, yeah, for your seniors. So I mean, it's and then what's the trade off there? Does not have an anything going on in your community, race crime? So you're, you're laying off parks and rec, you're laying off cops and now your crime's going up because nobody has anything to do but go out and get into mischief? I mean, these are the, these are the things that keep me up at night.
And they should.
They absolutely.
No, seriously. I mean, you know, you, you don't want to be able to do that in a community, but on the other hand, you want, you want the you want the community to see what it's going to cost in terms of not just dollars, but in terms of services.
And, and to date, um, city staff, I think if you look back at everything we've had to do through COVID and different cuts, we have, I mean, we've hit P D on budgeted items for operational expenses, but we've tried not to touch first responders at all. And I think we've done a, a good job not doing that. And I mean, you look at the annual report from our P D, uh, we do a good job. We're, we're, we're a safe city. I can go to I C S E and show our crime stats and show that damn near every category of major crimes is down year over year. That says a lot for our city and for people that want to come into our city. I mean, that's a huge.
Potential businesses should see that.
They always ask that. What's your crime like? What's your crime like? You know, they don't want to come in here if we're going to be like San Francisco and everybody smash and grab it every day. So then the other things, um, additional staff reductions to other general fund departments. Guess it may be ten to fifteen additional employees out of non, you know, non, uh, public safety positions. Furloughs of existing employees. Um, if we did a couple, couple day a month furlough, you know, that would, that would save some dollars.
How many employees do we, how many full time employees do we have?
Hundred and thirteen. Within one or two probably, right? Pardon me? Oh, but they're not all, yeah, they're not. That's total positions in the city. That's not all general fund positions. That's total positions. I could get the exact number of general fund positions here.
Uh, so they're not general fund. Where, when did you furlough those through?
Uh, well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact your general fund at all.
I got you.
And it would impact stuff like water, sewer, trash, all our enterprise funds, which we we can't not have, even if we're off that day, somebody's got to go do the rounds and do the checks. So, but those are enterprise accounts, so not real.
They're self sufficient.
Yeah, not really concerned, uh, at this moment in time, trying to solve the, the general fund first. And then, um, maybe outsource, outsourcing of some departments. That, that could be on the table, you know, we outsourced water several years ago. Um, today it seems to be working pretty good.
How about the call center? Could we also outsource that?
I don't think so. Unless they want to come here and well, we already are.
I mean, yeah, we are. Not operational, so I mean, we're.
Right, so so really the conversation then turns to what would our new contract look like and what are the fees to outsource versus in-house? Um, so we'll be ready to stand it up. Um, hopefully by next fiscal year, whether we have the money to actually staff it a hundred percent, not sure yet. Now I gotta see what's left over on the, the grant funds we received. Some of those I believe can be used to pay salaries out, but we need to finish the project first and s- stuff's coming in daily. Okay, so we got the timeline. So we're here talking tonight. In June, we'll be coming to council for a budget presented for approval. Depending on what we decide between now and then on thresholds and, and what the requirements are going to be. November of twenty four, possible sales tax measure or other measures on the ballot. And then twenty five, if it passes, we'll start seeing those revenues come in with the tax, with the, uh, with the rolls.
And if it doesn't.
If it doesn't.
Which one of those things are you going to prioritize that we do?
I'll, I'll start cutting expenses right away. I'll have to. It'll be, it'll be personnel cuts. Those will be the biggest impact to get us where we need to be. Uh, because like furloughing is worth a couple hundred thousand. Um, you know, you get couple, two, three bites at a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there, that absolutely helps, but it's not enough to get the several million I need. Um.
Well, you know, between August and June, I can't speak for anybody else, but it sure would be helpful on that prior page. If you had a list of what those items, what those line items cost in terms of what they would save as far as reduction.
Okay, hold on.
And, you know.
So if we've.
So merit increases with you know, what does that cost? You know.
I have that, I think, in my notes.
I, I would just like to see the dollar amounts for all those. Don't have to do it tonight necessarily, but.
I'll bring it back in an update.
Okay.
I'll bring them back, but I know, I know like the furlough was, I want to say two hundred and eighty something thousand, but and that would depend on if we furloughed, if nobody got laid off, that would be the maximum benefit. But if we cut heads and furloughed, the furlough amount would be less because the headcount reduction could be different, but I'll get those numbers out to council.
Yeah, you know, from my point of view, I, I would I don't really want to lay anybody off.
Neither do I.
And, uh, I don't think any of us do, but in the event that if we did go out for something and it didn't pass, what's the best scenario for us to keep everybody working and, uh, having to do some, some of these things to so we can try it again.
I think, yeah, overall, I think the biggest impact's going to be to the police department. Um, I've already met with, with Sheriff Robinson to talk about, you know, what would it look like if the sheriffs came and assisted and helped? And it just really doesn't pencil out. Um, dollar for dollar, we'd be better off running a reduced staff than we would be to outsource with the sheriffs. Um, and then hourly fee and, and, and things of that nature. Um, Sheriff Robinson isn't here tonight, but he, he did say I could publicly say that he does support a sales tax measure. And, uh, encourages it for us to, to maintain public safety. Just he's like, I mean, he gets it. He, he, he knows we've, we've talked quite a few hours over this thing already. Um, but having an outside agency come in and, and do our policing for us doesn't, doesn't really save us anything versus going to reduce staff and having our own in-house. And I would always, I would always push to keep it in-house instead of putting public safety on somebody else.
I, I agree with Councilmember Gornick. I too would like to see what those numbers look like, because I think like, um, it's a very long list and it looks like this could be the savior. But, um, some of those seem like they might be very minimum and not as cost saving as one might think. So I think having those numbers would be helpful.
No problem. I'll try to get them to you tomorrow.
And you know, the other thing that I think might be helpful too is if you could, uh, begin to, uh, have a dialogue with the, uh, uh, with the, uh, labor groups. And, uh, talk about the worst case scenario. If we weren't, if we weren't able to pass something, if we decide to go out, what would be the number of furloughs or the days that, you know, we might work together? With the caveat that uh, you know, they're not going to go on forever. We're going to when we get some revenue, we can get it back.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just want to play, uh, provide some clarification. So this list of things that you see here, based on our best guess, because some of these things have to be negotiated. Is that if we don't move forward with any sort of revenue raising increases, all of those things have to happen to shore up four point four million dollars. That's all that gets you. All of those things.
So every single one of these, that only shores up the gap.
Yes.
With.
Yes, in year one. So when you take those revenue and expenditure projections and you, and you extrapolate that out, you know, three, four and five years, you're no longer solving for four million. You're solving for eight.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So just because you're asking for specific numbers, I just wanted you to know in totality.
But we got to start somewhere.
Right, but just because to provide clarification, all of those things to our best guests, because obviously it depends on how some of those are negotiated, is roughly four to four and a half million dollars.
Well. If a hiring freezes, a hiring freeze. Right?
Right, it happens to one.
Right. Well, no, it may not. It may go on for a couple of years. I don't know. Right. But I'm, you, you're not talking about one position. You're talking about all positions. Yeah. Okay.
And then to your point earlier about looking at with the, the bargaining units and stuff, that's, that's our negotiated. Portion of, of benefit, so that's where we can talk about. You know, uh, basically everything.
Yeah.
You know, and, and go from there. So that, that isn't here and that is a negotiated item. Over the timeline already. So here's the status quo timeline. This is, if we absolutely do nothing, just put our head in the sand. We're out of money in twenty six. We're, we're actually at a zero balance in our general fund and we would cease to operate twenty twenty six. If we do nothing, we will not do that.
The, uh, Ju- the June thirty twenty twenty four. The, you're anticipating an ending fund balance of eight point one million.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and this year we took a four hundred and something thousand deficit to council. It really would have been closer to four million, but we had three point. Six million of ARPA funds that we were able to move over. So that's what really shored to get us to four fifty seven this year. We really would have had, without those ARPA funds. Our net balance at the end of the year would have been under five million.
Right.
We'd be cutting already.
So we, so we have a, uh. We have a swing of thirteen million dollars from one, one year to the next. From, uh, eight point one balance. To a five point three, uh. Negative.
Yeah, that would be if we're anticipating. This year's budget was seventeen point four million. If it goes up to twelve percent, you'd be looking at about nineteen. Million, a little over nineteen million. And if revenues were fourteen million this year and they go up eight percent. That gives us what fifteen something? So that would be the difference in pulling the balance out to shore up that budget. Would leave us that five million bucks.
Right.
If we didn't, absolutely nothing.
Right, right.
Okay. Next slide. So council consensus, I mean. Really, we'd like to receive consensus. Um, I know there's still some outstanding items you're asking for. I would, but due to the, the nature and the work. Ahead depending on what, uh, council decides for staff to do, we're, we're gonna need some direction, pretty short order. I'd prefer to have it next month if I could. So we can get, get working on stuff in the interim. I can get any other additional information. You may need and really whatever council wants, just let me know and we'll get working on it.
I was just speaking for myself, that, um, definitely a lot of information tonight, a lot to digest and, and research, so, um. Will do my best to do that in a timely fashion to give you some consensus.
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, this isn't a fun night. Not at all. I, I personally feel we've been doing a good job on active and bringing in business and bringing funds into the town, but.
Well, it's better to talk about it now than.
It's like beating your head into the wall for all that hard work and effort and. You don't really see the results, right? So. Um, it's kind of a bummer. Really is.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I know we kind of went over these and it was fairly quick, um. And it's a lot to digest. On a lot of different aspects. Next time we meet or whenever we figure this numbers out and. I would like to look at, I mean, or are you going to give us this presentation? I mean, I could look at it on my own, I guess, but.
Yeah, I can give you this.
I just.
It's gonna be in the.
I would just really like to know what the breakdowns of, I see where it says one point five, the two point O, the UUT tax, the TOT tax, parcel tax. Just like to see it all though, so I can sit there and. Think, uh, how important.
Yeah.
Taxing our, our, uh, citizens are going to be.
So the UUT is going to be hard for me to give you a number. I can probably give you a range.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because you're talking one to eleven percent, and then are you only going to go after? PG and E and the gas company? Are you going to include Comcast, internet users and all the cell pro, cell phone providers, but all this stuff requires a vote.
That's what I was asked.
None of this is just a. Everything we decide tonight. Now I can take one UUT tax. At say five percent, whatever, six, four, and list what we're going to tax out on that. Um, but everything in here needs to go to the voter.
But and, and what is, is it the same, you said last time you went out for.
A sales tax. We went out for a one cent sales tax.
You had to do two thirds last time, right?
Yeah, because we were doing it as a special. We're, we're going to run as a, a general.
General this time, okay. And, uh.
Cause I, cause honestly, I, I think.
I think that's.
I think we have a chance to pass it a general.
But in terms of, uh, and so the same thing with the UUT. Is that a, is that a, uh?
Is that a two thirds or a fifty percent plus one?
Hold on a second.
That's what I thought.
Is it fifty plus one?
It is. There was.
Right, it's fifty plus one. And my colleague Rob Lamelli is here tonight, council, and he's the one that did all the research on the different tax measures, so I'm kind of looking at him for. Tell me, is it fifty plus one or two thirds? So if you have additional questions too, Rob can always jump in.
Great to hear that, Rob. Now.
So a parts max, sorry to interrupt you, but a parcel tax does require a two thirds majority.
Hmm.
Parcel tax requires two thirds majority, so sixty six, sixty seven percent.
Now, uh, also, will we be sitting down with all of our bargaining units? Especially the one that massively in this office, in this room right now. Uh, would we be talking?
Only if we get direction to do that.
No, 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 I, I know, but would that be one of the things to see, you know?
Yes, in order for me, obviously, in order, in order for me to. Get the numbers and come back with solid numbers, we would almost have to reopen negotiations, yes.
Well, no, what, I, I think what I'm asking is if we decide. A sales tax measure, I would love, 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 love that day we decide that. To have every bargaining unit in this room that understands that they need to get on board with this, if this is the way we're going to do it, so we all work as a team. And if we're going to do this, we need to do it right. If we have to save. Five million dollars. We got to do it as a team. And we all have to trust each other, that this is what we're going to do as a team. If we're not going to do it as a team. You know, you know how that rule goes. We ride together, we die together. The numbers show in two years, we all die. We all do. Not good.
Uh. Well, one of the things I, I, uh, two things. You're going to give us the numbers on that list.
Hmm.
Your best estimate. And, uh. And also, uh, I'd like to come by and talk with you a little bit about. How I see these measures, pro or con.
Absolutely.
And then, um. The, uh, in my, my point about talking to the, uh, to the groups and the employees is that. Uh, I think Councilmember Worth, uh, said it right, you know, we're, um, if we take this. Uh, step, we got to have everybody on board and everybody needs, the citizens need to know. That, um, you know, our public safety is our, we, we believe, I think, I. Speak for all of us, that's our one, our number one job. And we want to stay there, but, uh. We've got to, we got to move in a little different direction and, uh. Uh, I personally would like to stay away from the parcel tax or the bond. Myself, because these consumption taxes, everybody gets the same way, you know, so. Uh. Just my personal thought.
I would just have the question for all of these, if, if they. Have a sunset or not, so each individual.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think on this, on this one, we, if we go after a sales tax, I think you exponentially increase your chances of sunsetting it. But I'd probably ask for like seven years. With the hopes that if things get better. Future councils. Would maybe not take the full benefit if they don't need it. Because we're going to, if we go out in seven years, we're going to have to redo this in seven years. So we better be good stewards with the money if it, if it were to pass, or we're going to get shot down. And being a bigger pickle, because the gaps will be huge, bigger than, so.
Just look at all the, in seven years, just think how many more homes are built. And, and residents in, in the city, so you're going to have to have more.
A little more property tax.
Terms of what's, what's involved there, so, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from councils or comments?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Very good, very thorough.
Yeah.
Thank you for giving us adequate time.
Glad we had to look this way and not over my shoulder, but.
Uh, any comment from the public? Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Good evening. I want to first express my appreciation to City Manager Olson, Assistant. City Manager Spear for their hard work and presenting this information, but I also wanted to emphasize that. It's not only important to balance our budget, we also have to ensure that we're competitive employer. Because we don't want to lose our employees and our strategy should consider a wage study, a rate study. Because we have to have a comprehensive approach in order to fully understand the situation, because as City Manager Olson has said, we've been. Doing hiring freezes, we've had staff cutbacks, et cetera. This is only a Band-Aid on the problem. It doesn't address the core issue. If we're going to address the core issue, we have to have a full understanding of what our employees deserve. And in previous councils, we've expressed the interest in having a rate study, and when I've been going, coming to council for over a year, if we yet to see it, it doesn't have to be now, but. As part of the strategy, this should be in consideration. In addition, in order to promote a resilient economy in Lamoire, Lamoire. In addition to having a fair competitive compensation, we also need to examine. Our taxes and rate fees, and that would be through the rate study. I, I support getting the numbers. For these propositions that City Manager Olson presented tonight, so we can evaluate the best decision for our community. But I also want to emphasize the importance of campaigning. For whatever measure the city puts forward, because we've seen measures lose on the ballot when it haven't been campaigned on. Or when there wasn't a lack of awareness around them. I also think we should explore private public partnerships. And build relationships with businesses and cities to see what services we can bring to make Lamoire more attractive. Because it's not just about having income and revenue, it's about this being a place that people want to live, so they're keeping their dollars in Lamoire. In addition to that, I think we should survey and canvas the public on, to get feedback on the measures that we're proposing as well, see what stores, restaurants, et cetera. That we want in our communities, so people are spending their money, spending their monies in Lamoire and keeping their money in Lamoire. Competition is good, but as Mayor Pro Tem Gornick said, we don't want to reduce our current businesses' impact revenue. We don't want to make ourselves bleed. We want to. Patch our Band-Aid and help ourselves grow so we can expand our businesses and expand our market in the valley. And my understanding is our current challenges are obviously debt, a la- a lack of revenue, and historic low ranks in our city employees. And we want to be conscious about our vacant spaces, and I appreciate the direction that the city has taken, having this conversation, working with retail strategies. And presenting this information to the public, but we need to have more public hearings such as this, so we can keep the communication going. So when we do take these actions, we're all on the same team as the council member said. We need to, and I also want to emphasize that we need to support the needs of our community, ensured our first responders are not only working. The beats that they're assigned, but have workable hours, and we're not reducing staff because public safety is incredibly important. It's easy to say these points without a solution at hand, but I truly appreciate your time and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Uh, Mark Peskettor, Mark Police Officers Association, um, just real briefly, um. We haven't had a meeting, we haven't voted on this, but I can tell you in the past, we've always carried the city forward on sales tax measures. Measure K, the last one, we've always been the city's champion out in front of all of that, um, more so than I think anybody else, so. I'm sure when the time comes, you will have the support of at least the Police Officers Association behind that measure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
It was about.
Only if it's about this item, we'll have regular public comment in a little, in just a little bit. Thank you, sir. Okay, last call?
Let me guess, Jennifer Solis.
How rude. It's me, Connie. Can you see me? I don't know how you can't see. Anyway. I wanted to say. I am someone who has watched and watched and watched, and this council. The city manager. That lovely attorney. You all are working. To the right. Goal and don't ever think that. You don't have citizens behind you. It's just keep going forward. We're not going to let this town be a ghost town. Thank you.
Thank you. One more public comment?
No, there's one more.
Solid Ed Perez, nine nine two Fulton Leaf Drive. I just wanted to address the council. Behind me, you, um, see most of my LPD family, so we are here to support the city. On any, um, way you guys would, um, you know, decide to go. I live in Lamoire, um, I definitely would not like, um. Public safety to be affected. I like to take my walks, like to go to the stores late at night. And I know that I'm safe in my city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second or third last call?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. We'll move on to public comment. One more?
No, just thank you for, thank you for your time. Um, I got to say it was a, a rather, I think, good meeting. Uh. Nobody got out of shape or been out of shape. I know I can get a little fired up sometimes, so, um, I appreciate the candor and the, uh, the open communication, right? Good, thank you.
Okay, public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest. That are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. Each, and it is requested that no comments. Be, sorry. No comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the council, any handouts for council will be provided to the city clerk. For distribution to the council and appropriate staff. Public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda once the item has been called. Is there any public comment? Sir, this would be the time probably where you wanted to comment.
Hi, thank you. I really agree with the last comment from the lady. It's really good to have a safety. In publics and in the order to be safe in the city. Yes, I want to address a, a problem we were, um, having in the. Came for our Mona Road. Last Saturday and today. And we have a really two. Fatal accidents. And. And it's, maybe it's because it's not enough signs. Or maybe it's because. They, uh, the drivers don't respect the speed limit. And, yeah, that, that is the, the problem I want to address here in the, in the meeting. And. Uh, actually, we have, um, I have a couple experience when the. I live in the, in the apartment, uh, complex, the Park Place Apartments. So I had two kids, one is fifteen and one is twelve, and usually we go to the park. Or they go to the park and we cross the, the only crosswalk. On the, between the eighteen and seventeen. Is the sign light. And last Saturday in the morning, somebody was killed over there. And today, um, another person was killed, like three hundreds on the east on the, came from Mona Road. And. Couple times and we were crossing the road. The drivers don't respect the speed limit, or they were not respecting the, the sign light. When we could, when we pushed to get a red light. They don't respect it, and it's really scary. Because, um. When I go with them, I can see it, but when they are alone. Coming back from the school is really, it's really bad. I don't know if the city can. Can put some measures here to. I don't know, to address the problem, to put, um, better signs. Or lights or. Speed limit sign enforced with the cameras. I don't, I know I have a big problem with the money right now. And I think. Is to put one more thing on the basket. I'm sorry. But, um, I think. The people is, uh, losing their loves. He's really bad. And, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any online, Marissa? We'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Uh, three dash one approval agreement between the city of Lamoire and Bryant L. Jolly. And provide, to provide professional auditing and financial services for the fiscal years ending in June thirty. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure who's taking that one.
It's consent.
It's consent.
Oh, well, that's consent calendar, sorry. Okay. Um, does anybody want to pull that item from council?
I'd still have a question, uh. Did we go out to bid for this service?
No, um, we're not required to, and part of this is we still had one year left on our current. Uh, professional contract. That auditor though has since, um, he will not, no longer be able to service the city of Lamoire. And auditors right now are in. Uh, they're, they're hard to find, so, um, I'll let Michelle take it from here, but no, we did not bid this.
Yeah, so the city currently has a contract with Hudson Henderson CPAs. Um, unfortunately, that firm no longer exists. We were notified of that about two weeks ago. Um, this is for our fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit, so those books closed on June thirtieth, so we were.
So we were under the gun to find an agency that would be willing to take us on such short notice. Um, and many of them, especially those that work with local agencies in the Central Valley, are already booked up on their client portfolio. They've already begun that process with other um, agencies. Um, we've worked with this firm before. They've done some contracting work for for us in the past, never as auditors, but in a different capacity. Um, they came highly recommended. They do other local government agencies in the Central Valley, and they were willing to give us um, a three-year contract with an optional two-year extension. Um, at very reasonable rates. So um, my recommendation is that we approve this contract, because I have to have someone under contract to begin our audit process.
And the only reason we didn't go out for bid was because.
We don't have the time to go out to bid and have the audit complete.
For the twenty-three or for the other years?
For twenty-three, but um, so you have the option to only approve it for a one year. I don't know if this firm would do it if we only offered a one-year contract. Most firms want a multi-year contract. The first year of an audit process takes the longest and the most labor intensive, because they're building the groundwork for their audit platform for your agency, learning your practices. Um, and so the second through the fifth year is typically easier. Um, and so a lot of firms don't want to do single-year contracts.
Any other questions from council? See you then.
Well, I I was forming my question, I'm sorry. I don't know if I want to ask ask this question, but what is the difference in financial between the auditors we had before and this new one?
Okay, so assuming that the city has to go out for a single audit, which means you've received over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding in a fiscal year. Our previous rate was roughly forty-eight and a half thousand. Um, our new rate's fifty-three, so marginal.
Okay.
Any other question from council? Comments? We'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Does anybody from the public have any comment? I figured.
Madam Mayor and Council, I support the adoption of three dash one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? See, and then I'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say that.
A motion by Councilmember Lyons and a second by Councilmember Gornick. Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, Garza. Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orth.
Yes.
Councilmember Gornick.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move into closed session. We have item one, Government Code Section four, five, four, nine, five, seven, point six, Conference with Labor Negotiator Agency Designated Representatives. Mary Lerner, City Attorney, and Michelle Spear, Assistant City Manager, Employee Organizations, Lamoore Police Officers Association, and Lamoore Police Sergeants Unit. We also have an item number two, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Two or Three of Subdivision D of Section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine of the Government Code, one case. So we will go into closed session.